For our February 27 meeting, I forgot to bring this in. But I do think that this would be an appropriate time to acknowledge the loss of a very dear friend of the whole area. Leonard Lookner passed away back in February, beginning of February, and is a great loss to the communities throughout the area. He's served here in so many different capacities over the years. And, you know, he came into the world on April 17, 1940, and left for a better place, one I know he is making much better even now, on February 5. So if we could please acknowledge him with a moment of silence and reflection, I think that would be very appropriate this time. Leonard, we look forward to your continued guidance, and I'm sure you will. We have no public meeting this evening. We do have two items that were put on the agenda for meeting minutes, Monday, November 9, 2015, and Monday, February 27, 2017. Neither of those have been prepared for us. We did receive two sets of minutes, but too late to be able to appear on this agenda. So I'm just going to table those all until our March 23 meeting. We do have a couple of upcoming meetings of the Select Board. Our next regular meeting will be March 27, here at 7:00 PM, and also on Monday, April 10, here at 7:00 PM. The agenda for the evening contains all of the necessary announcements regarding upcoming Select Board and budget workshops. Of particular interest is this Wednesday, we will be having our consensus votes. 7:00 PM, it will be televised as to what we're going to recommend to the Budget Committee for the budget for the next year. They will then be meeting the following Tuesday and reporting back to us on their findings. So those meetings are all in the agenda. Also, there are a number of other town meetings, town committee meetings, and they're all posted on the town website. I do want to make comment about a couple of upcoming workshops. They're both in May, all in May. We now have a draft capital improvement plan presented to us, and we'll be holding our first meeting on that on Monday, May 1, 5:30 PM, here at the Opera House, and it'll be televised. And we will also be meeting, we have a second meeting on that scheduled for May 11. That's a Thursday, also 5:00 PM. And we will be doing the wastewater budget envisioning workshop on Wednesday, May 17. That will be at 4:00 PM over in the town office. Committee openings, we have a number of openings on the committees, and those are also posted in the agenda for this evening. Do we have any agenda changes we wish to make this evening?
Not at this time.
Nope. Then we'll move on. We have unfinished, the Town Manager's Report.
A little comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I forgot. We have public comment at this time. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Does anyone wish to make public comment on anything this evening?
My name is Ames Curtis. I'm from West Rockport. I just want to make a very quick statement that the Select Board had promised to do a fair and balanced impartial process in terms of the decision-making about the site of a new library. And I think the process was anything but impartial, and it was not an adequate comparison. And I'm hoping that the residents and citizens of Rockport will remember that at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make comment this evening? Hearing none, then we will go on to the Town Manager's Report. As I said, the Town Manager is not here this evening. He did present a, prepare a report for this meeting last Friday, and it has been published on the town website, and I believe there are copies over here if anyone wishes to see Our technician here is trying to bring it up. I'm not sure if he's going to. There it is. But do we want to read that, or do we just want to move forward? Brendan?
Well, the beginning of it has some bearing on the subdivision, right?
The Town Manager's Report?
Doesn't his manager's report touch on that?
Post it. It probably works.
No?
I'm not.
Okay, then, no, I certainly don't. Here it is. Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I apologize. Then, no, I certainly don't need to read through it.
Okay. Ken?
No, I think we're fine. It is available if folks want to see it. I'm scrolling through it on the screen here. If anybody sees anything that they particularly want us to expand on, we can try our best, but it's not our report, it's his report.
Yep. So then we will move on to the unfinished business. That is consideration of a change to the personnel policies and procedures for the town. They were brought before us at our last meeting, February 27, and we took some issue with the items that are the way that it was worded, and asked that it go back to the town attorney and be brought back before us tonight. That has been brought back. There are several changes that have been made, mostly in keeping with the direction that we provided to the Town Manager. The changes appear starting on page 27, if you have that. And I understand that it was given to you and Jeff for work.
Yeah, I looked at it and made a couple of other suggestions, which were then taken into account. And I think what we have right now is fine, is in good shape. Basically, just reiterates the idea, classifies marijuana in with alcohol as a legal substance, and still says that you are not able to use that on the job or where it's going to impair your job, and changes the wording around of some other things, and basically protects the town against any issues with that. And clearly states out what the policy is for the employees.
I'm fine with the wording as it is.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept the changes to the policy as presented?
I move to approve the recommended changes to the personnel policy shown in Article 11, Alcohol and Drug Abuse, as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous, so it passes. Next item, we now move to new business. We have no acknowledgement of gifts or committee resignations. We do have a committee application, and that is for Ames Curtis, who is here this evening, to become an alternate member on the Parks Committee. And Ames, would you come on back up to the podium, please? I would say you have received a glowing endorsement from the Parks Committee Chair, David Jackson, so.
I know Dave well, I know Sonny well, I've met Jim Sadie, I've met Noni Ames. I have not, I don't think I've met Linda Possen, who's on the board.
Oh. Mm-hmm. And you lay out here in your application, your desires on why you wish to serve, and I think very, very nice, very succinct, too. Glad that. Ken, do you have any questions?
Glad you're willing to serve. We know you well enough to know that you will state your opinions on anything.
Say my opinion, and I put in my effort.
And, but that's, it's wonderful that you're willing to do that work. It's a good, good, well-functioning committee, and I think you'd be a great addition. Dave Jackson noted in his notes that he's asking us to think about perhaps expanding the number of the committee. Right now, it's a committee of five, and you would be an alternate member.
I understand that.
But he's talking about possibly expanding it to seven, and we'll have, we'll take that up at another time. But in any event, if we were to do that, then as an alternate member, you would move right into a regular.
That would seem to serve to put him back in the difficulty of making up a quorum, right?
I think, I think what he's saying now is that they're having a hard time making up a quorum right now.
That's what he told me, that he often schedules meetings, and there aren't three people that are in town to come.
So best try, try to.
I don't know. It may be that some members of that committee are out of town for portions of the year or something. Maybe part of it, I'm not sure.
He wanted to schedule a meeting this month and was unable because of the schedules. People were all out of town on various things, and so the next meeting will be in April. Usually, they don't have a real problem during the summer months. Occasionally, there will be, because like everything else during the summer months, people like to do other things and just sit around. But I know that's a very active committee. They're doing a lot in our parks to bring them up and improve them. David was here before the budget, well, during the budget review process, and, you know, made a strong recommendation for additional money to be provided.
Allocated for that.
Yeah. So.
Is there anything further I need to do, or that you need to vote, or?
We have to vote.
I think we're about to vote.
We will have, we will have to, and I will remind you, we're going to have to be unanimous.
I understand. I heard that. So you want me to leave the room?
No, that's all right. Do we have a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint Ames Curtis as an alternate member of the Parks Committee. And I don't know, we don't have an expiration suggestion for that. I mean, she would be the only.
Alternate member, so.
Well, we also, we usually give them.
Not filling somebody's terms.
No. But we usually give them a timeframe as well, so that they come up for renewal if there's still no, still isn't an alternate member.
Three-year.
I would say 2020, June 30. You know, since we're almost at the end of this current year.
I would add to the motion to expire June 30, 2020.
Second. Moved and seconded. No further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'm teasing you, Ames.
Thank you, Ames.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you. We appreciate it. The next item we have is consideration of the request to pre-bid and preorder this November 2017, the Rockport fire truck, for a July 1, 2018 purchase. We have before us the memo from our fire chief, and he is here this evening as well to explain to us, though, the letter that was provided, really, pretty clear, that they're all going to be bumping up their prices, and if we order by November 1, we will be in under the old price scheme.
Correct.
And be able to use the money that we effectively save for outfitting the truck.
The entire truck, that is correct.
Now, is my understanding that this truck is going to replace 23 and 25?
25 and 24, potentially.
Oh.
If we can find a way to keep in the reserve as a forestry truck for West Rockport, we're going to talk to Rick about that, at no additional cost. It'd be at a zero cost.
Which is the forestry truck?
It used to be 23. That's, that's the old 23, it's now 24. When we got the new truck last year, we renumbered them.
Oh, okay.
In addition to securing the cost savings, do I understand correctly, this does not change the schedule of actual expenditure or funds?
The payment gets made on the same date regardless if we do this or not. It's just the payment could be larger, or it could be smaller based on the equipment savings.
But we'll be getting a 10-year lease on this, correct?
Everything's the same. Nothing changes except for when we order the truck. Currently, the list that you saw, we had out of the four companies, two of them are having price increases. One of the companies is the one we just purchased three, four years ago, which was the new E23, which was E1. They have a price increase, and that's one of the companies we're really looking into. So 3 to 5.5% could be a substantial amount.
Yep. And this would be from Greenwood?
E1 Greenwood, yes. Yes, sir.
That's the logo on the memo you gave us, so.
Yes.
So we're committing to do it, but we're not, we're not going to spend the money any earlier. Is there any, I don't anticipate it's doing this, but what if we commit to do it and then pull out? Is there any penalty there, or?
I, to be honest with you, I don't know that answer. I'd have to check.
I mean, I can't imagine that we would do that unless, you know, there was some economic catastrophe or something like that. We've planned for this for a long time, so.
Right.
It seems like a no-lose proposition.
It does seem that way.
So.
And they are able to promise us at this point that they will have that truck to be delivered, ready to be delivered to us in July, August?
We'll probably get it in July and/or August, one of the two, depending on it. Their request is November 1 to get under that deadline. From what I was told by two of them, that would easily be a July delivery date. Depending on any modifications, changes, when we go down, it could push it back by 30 days.
Well, I would think that committing this early is going to help with the delivery date, too.
Correct. Right. If not, we'd be ordering it July 1 of 2018 and taking delivery in the winter. Delivery of a fire truck in the winter is very difficult for training and everything else.
How significantly different will this one be from the one that you just purchased?
Very. This will be, current truck is 29 feet, 11 inches. This one will be roughly 34 feet. This will be basically a storage truck. It'll, all the equipment that we have on two different trucks will go onto this one truck, as well as we potentially be putting on the cab system, which is a foam air system. It helps with the fewer amount of firefighters when attacking a fire. The foam helps extinguish it much quicker with a limited amount of personnel. So it's going to have a lot of difference.
And where will this truck be housed?
Like, in the middle bay.
Okay, so.
That's the longest bay, yeah.
Right, okay.
That's where 25 currently sits by itself.
In the central station, not out of West Rockport?
Correct. It wouldn't fit out there.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
The current one barely fits, something five feet longer.
None of the pumpers that we have in Rockport right now will fit out there, so.
Well, I'll move to support the Town Manager's intent to start the bid process earlier than normal in order for the town to take advantage of current pricing and get the truck delivered in FY 2019 as planned.
Second. Do we have further discussion? Brendan?
Nope.
Nope? No? All right. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
I hope you have a quiet night.
Thank you.
The next item that we have is a request for road acceptance by the residents of Bay Ridge 4 subdivision. They are requesting that we accept Hawthorne Drive. And actually, as I read it, it is both Hawthorne Drive and something that has been recently renamed Bayberry Lane. And I'm kind of confused about that. Is there's anyone here to speak about that?
Jamie's here.
Jamie's here.
Coming over.
All right.
Shall I begin?
Yes.
Oops. So I need the, oh, you put it on the screen. Thank you. I'm Jamie Francamano from the Planning and Development Department. This request has been in the works for some time, as you know.
This might print it off.
The, the new road acceptance ordinance requires that only a quarter of the lots on a portion of a road or roads that are requested to be accepted as town roads be developed. So that's a much lower bar than the former 50% test.
But that's.
And you only get there if you have, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's an important qualifier there, and that's that the road has to connect to existing town roads.
Yes. The, the public amenity of a new through route was considered the rationale for lowering the bar in some cases. And the question before you is, is this one of those cases? So we count 18, 19 lots. 18 of them actually have frontage on the roadways in question. One of them is Dick Nightingale's in the way back that doesn't technically have frontage. So if we go with those 18, I count seven that have the principal use developed or in the process on the lots that you see there. So seven out of 18, that makes 38%, right in between the old test and the new test. So these are the folks that we were expecting to see, literally and figuratively, because the, they have the situation that we were writing for. And I brought copies of the ordinance, just in case anybody wants to go deeper. You guys bringing that along, I think? You've seen it, is anybody else?
Yeah. I know, I know we saw it when we approved it to go on the warrant, this fastball.
Yes, and I thought I should bring that version, so you would recognize your tracks. These are the track changes.
Did you meet, did you give me two of the same?
I think so. The last ones you made at your meeting of August 22.
Go ahead.
Let's see here. What my message to you all is, that this group could pursue a citizen's petition, just like any other. There's two routes to the town meeting ballot. And so as a courtesy, and hopefully as a chance to be, begin and start this project, begin and finish the project, you guys can put it on the ballot tonight, or let them know, you better get started with the petition process, which is lengthy. Can you just walk me through the 403 connection to the municipal road? Okay, so what did we use?
I can do that, Brendan, because I was involved in writing that. That's, that's actually, doesn't necessarily apply to this case.
Okay.
403 says the private road proposed must connect to an existing municipal road. And the reason that's in there is.
It's not make a new connection.
Right. The reason that's there is that there are some situations in town where a portion of a road has the 25% developed.
I understand.
But the portion of the road that connects to the town road doesn't. So we didn't want to be in a situation where we were approving a town road that had no connection at all to any other town roads, because then the public works couldn't go in there to plow it, because they couldn't drive over the private road to get there. So that's not the situation we have here.
Not relevant to the current.
Yeah.
Okay. So the exact words we used, which Ken noticed this afternoon, help me, Ken, I just keep being reminded I was prescribed glasses for a reason.
My concern, when we were first talking about this, unless I'm wrong, Hawthorne Drive connected to Ashley Terrace. Apparently, now it's been, it's in the process of being renamed or something like that. So as it stands right now, Hawthorne Drive does not connect two municipal roads.
I'm looking forward to addressing that part. Can you read the language in the ordinance?
Before we go, before we go further, we say we will entertain comment from the public prior to any war, or any of our agenda items. Does anyone wish to make comment at this point?
I think we can, yeah. I mean, if you want to, that's fine. But I think we can entertain it during the process as well, if it's.
Is this semantics what you're bringing up, or is it substantive?
I, it's, it's, I mean, because I was involved in writing this, and what I wanted, what we wanted to do, there was, the threshold was there, 50% of the lots had to be developed before the road could be accepted by the town. That was in the ordinance before we started this whole process, and folks from this neighborhood came to us and wanted us to grandfather it, because this part of the ordinance was adopted after that road was actually built. But anyway, so we went this route of allowing an exception for a road, particularly that connected two municipal roads, thinking that there was a benefit to that of allowing through traffic between two connected roads, and encouraging that rather than a bunch of cul-de-sacs that don't necessarily connect to anything. And so that was the, sort of the rationale behind trying to help these folks out a little bit, and also to look at other areas of town where it might apply, where we would like to encourage the connection of municipal roads by another public road. So I'll stop there.
The, well, the fire chief has indicated, and I know that they've come from the school as well, that having a road that connects two municipal roads makes it easier for them to access, in the case of fire, from either end or the bus.
I heard concerns about the bus having the crazy turns and all the rest of it.
Yeah.
But did I understand what you were just saying a minute ago, that your reading is that this does not strictly apply because of a renaming issue?
The problem is that the roads that they're, that are being asked for to be considered right now, and if I can go up to the screen, I'll lose me a little bit on the microphone. But when we first started this process, it was my understanding, we were talking about this stretch of road going from here and up around here. Ashley Terrace right here is a town road, and Winding Way is a town road. So this stretch right here, in my opinion, would have met what we talked about by a connecting road. It's this stretch up here that is a little bit of an issue for me.
And it has been.
And the fact that it's being used in the calculation, is that?
That's part of it, but also this section of the road up here does not connect the two town roads. It's this section right here that I thought we were talking about all along. So I just, I mean, we have an ordinance, and I just want to make sure that.
And I went on both our town tax maps and on Google Earth, whatever they call it, and it shows that it's Cliffside Drive is the extension on both directions.
That's incorrect. I live on Cliffside Drive. That, the map is.
Well, if you want to speak, you'd need to speak, come up to the microphone, because the people at home cannot hear. We were made very clear on that the other night.
I think it would be helpful if I addressed the issue as well.
All right. If you want to speak.
So the maps are incorrect. That section you were pointing at is also Hawthorne Drive. Cliffside Drive goes where you see that cul-de-sac at the very end. It goes up to the right, and that's where I live. So my access is from Hawthorne Drive, but that's Cliffside Drive.
Okay, because the maps that we have show Cliffside Drive starting at where the L is and going all the way out.
Is there, Jamie, can you, is there a renaming going on here? Is that, because is that confusing things? Can you explain that if that's the case?
Yes.
Or is anybody else for that matter?
Yes, and it's important to recognize, the tax assessor's records do not connote land use entitlements. They're shorthand, just like you can't buy and sell a house based on a tax map. Don't go looking at the tax map to find out what the name of a road is. But the E911 Knox County emergency people seem to be the arbiters or the custodians of road names, and that's who we submitted a request to, to clarify this problem. For some reason, it went through the planning board, and the approved subdivision drawings show that both legs are called Hawthorne Drive. So the issue didn't occur to us six months ago while we were working on the ordinance, because the whole thing, incongruously, was referred to as Hawthorne Drive. The public works director and others pointed out how confusing that will be once we start using it and maintaining it as a, as a town road, because you shouldn't be able to turn right or go straight and still be on the same road. That's our thought process. And the reason I don't think it was caught, I mean, it wasn't caught. The reason that I think it was not caught is that there were no lots being developed for such a long time. This project took extra time. And the connection, the first house to be constructed is none other than Bob Duke's home there on the parcel that I've numbered five. And it occurred to me that, let me say that I believe the observation we've made about road names is semantics, and I'd like to overcome it. But it occurs to me that if we're wondering who the road name is, yes, go ahead. So am I correct that, Bob, your property has frontage on both Hawthorne Drive, on both leg, on, it has frontage on what we all know to be absolutely positively Hawthorne Drive, as well as the, the leg that goes over to connect Ashley Terrace?
It, it actually borders both, it borders the corner.
Yes.
The driveway's been constructed on the segment. I'm going to, so it appears to me as though, correct me if I'm wrong, you are the one person that would potentially take issue with changing what your street is called in order to solve this problem?
The first of four. It's not, it's not the name of the street that's the problem for me. It's, and I actually would want to get clear.
I understand that.
If somebody could point on the map, is which roads are, are being requested for, you know, which roads or parts of roads are being requested for acceptance by the town? That would help me quite a bit.
Do you have the memo with the maps?
Yes.
It's all three legs, right? That's what you said.
Yes, we have this prepared for Jonathan Duke.
Right. Yeah, it's right there.
Put a couple pages in.
No, no, it was clear to me from what Jamie said.
The third sheet, first of the color maps, shows the 2200 length feet in question. And the way I would. To finish that earlier thought, if we really wanted to know what that road is called, I think we need to ask Knox County EMA.
Go to the next one.
I'm not sure if that continues or not. Juniper has just the one.
Oh, okay.
But if you go through the packet, you'll find it. Thank you, Ken. I really appreciate that.
There we go.
Yeah, up one street, up one page gives you the, something that everyone knows is true. That's what's being requested. On the next sheet, you have my shorthand, where I'm writing that if it's not Bayberry Lane yet, it will be. And that's the only, you know, there's no legal significance to this or the tax maps. That's just me doctoring a PDF to make sure that everybody could tell where the road is. And so maybe Knox County EMA could settle the question. And so, maybe Knox County EMA could settle the question, um, if we decide that it's not just semantics of what the road name is today and what it will be on the morning of Tuesday, June, whatever. Because the, um, change might be triggered by Bob's certificate of occupancy or some other moment when the first person actually has an address and they request it. So, um-
We have clarity now to your question, which is what was being-
And that's, and that's, and my issue with it is, you know, trying to apply the ordinance is that we have a problem. Uh, because that one little spur that goes up the hill there that doesn't connect to anything, doesn't, in my opinion, and somebody may choose to differ, doesn't meet the rule, doesn't meet the test of a connecting road.
Oh, I to- I totally see that perspective, but the, the, the way that I would, um, simplify it, and what do you mean when someone says, is that semantics? If you find that you're going through extra somersaults in your, in your thought process to make something fit, maybe there, it's worth, you know, simplifying it. To me, the simplest way to say this is that that's the road that's requested to be expect, uh, accepted. And if it had one or two or ten names, that would still be the road.
Yeah, it's not, the name of the road is not the issue.
It's the fact that there's a leg of it that's dead end. That's his concern.
Oh, off to the left.
And originally it was presented to us as-
A portion of what's there does not connect to a town road, is that?
I am so relieved that that's your concern. I think that's a really good concern.
And when it was originally presented to us Hawthorne Drive went over at BlackBerry, or Bayberry Lane. It did not extend out. That had a different name.
I'm so relieved. So, that issue, um, is a more narrow issue of, um, where's the public amenity to going to, to the left at that turn, continuing out Hawthorne Drive to the end? That's a good question. And it might be that you would recommend to these applicants that they request that a less of the road be accepted, only the through route be accepted.
I think quite honestly, that's, I think quite honestly, that's what we have to do, because that's what the ordinance allows us to do. Uh, the ordinance, uh, the ordinance, I think, is fairly clear. If private or a portion of the private road proposed for acceptance extends between two municipal roads, connecting those two roads, then the fifty percent threshold is lowered to twenty-five percent.
So, you don't have a concern if part of it's Hawthorne and part of it's Bayberry?
No, I don't care what the name is.
Okay, I feel better. Learning about this at quarter to five, I was-
My concern with the name only was when I looked at the name and said Hawthorne goes all the way up here, I said, wait a minute. You know, Hawthorne, if, if you're saying I want to accept Hawthorne Drive, it doesn't meet the test for the ordinance. I'm perfectly, uh, uh, because I, as I've talked to some of the people in this neighborhood, it makes all the sense in the world to me to accept the portion of the road that connects the two roads. It's the other section up there that, right now, in my, in my opinion, and somebody could differ with that, the ordinance wouldn't allow us to accept it.
So, can you, I, I'm not gonna, uh, respond to that yet, but, um, can you talk me through, let's say that that is the case, and that is what the board did. What is the process for that other spur ever getting accepted by the town?
Would have to get to fifty percent, fifty percent of the lots developed.
Okay.
Per the current ordinance.
Juniper, would you mind going back to that other slide? We can start counting up.
Ken has, Ken has control.
I'm in control here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just call me Al Hay.
There we go.
So, we currently have number, the ones I numbered six and seven out there, but certainly more than that. So, it would, it would flunk the fifty percent test.
I, I count eight lots.
And this, this lane that goes off there doesn't connect to another public, off the map somewhere. But so that I understand the ordinance correctly, if it did, it would be at the twenty-five percent.
Right. I mean, you'd have to do a two-step process.
Or once Hawthorne was connected.
Yeah, once Hawthorne was accepted, then if it went on and connected to another one, then you would have it. I mean, the, the reasoning behind developing the ordinance this way is we, the, the board and, and the ORC for that matter, thought that having roads that connect to two roads was better for development, walkability, and all that kind of stuff in the town.
So, maybe we should make sure it's clear to the, the applicants where we've stopped. Um, I don't know for sure. How many of you are from the subdivision?
Charlie's up there.
At least three, okay. Um, we, we hosted a meeting, uh, unfortunately I was sick that day, but you see in the memo, the, all the lot owners appeared or emailed so that they could, uh, collaborate on this. And, um, it's a story that is played out all over Rockport, that, uh, a subdivision is approved, the lots are subdivided, and the build-out goes slowly. And what happens is no homeowners association gets formed, no capacity building in terms of making decisions, big decisions if you own a road, um, and probably, um, no progress in setting aside funds for future expenditures on, on common infrastructure. And so, it's not unusual at all to find a group at this stage where they, um, want to know, which way is this subdivision going? And prospective buyers call the office all the time and say, well, that's confusing. Is it a public road or isn't it? I guess I'll look somewhere else. So, we may very likely be in the way of the, um, the, the ultimate build-out of this subdivision at this point.
Is Winding Way a public road?
It is.
Is Chickewaqui Pond Road a public road?
It is. Oh, pardon me.
No, no. That's the one that runs right along the, the shorefront.
Yeah.
So, so theoretically, another way, and this may be preposterous, but, but another way to extend the, the spur out to the cul-de-sac would be to bring something through right there.
I don't know if the terrain would allow that.
And, and there will be no way we'll be able under our current ordinance except Chickewaqui Pond Road. It's too narrow and it's dirt.
Right. That goes to the rest of the story with the Bay Ridge four subdivision. It's the only one I know of that has, um, a record of public works approving of the specifications at the time of construction. And the, um, I guess another thing to say about it is that this group, um, is interested in making changes to the subdivision plan. No one has suggested, you know, a new through route, Brendan, but, um, two owners have requested to combine their lots, which would change the lot count, um, which is perfectly legal. But the, uh, covenants of this subdivision, which were recorded by the developer at paragraph twenty-two, say that all the lot owners must agree on any change to the subdivision plan. So, again, here's this group that hasn't yet formed the habit of making decisions together. And they're, they're, they're not inclined to make an agreement about changes to the plan before they find out, is this our road or is this the town's road?
Yeah, I follow you.
Well, I have a, I have an issue with them combining ro- lots, because that changes the nature of the subdivision. And if they can then combine it to get permission to or acceptance of the road, what's to stop them from later subdividing that and going right back to the problem we have now?
Well, first of all, I think if their subdivision documents give them a process for combining lots, then they can follow that. And then if they wanted to subdivide it later, they'd have to come back to the planning board for another subdivision.
Also, I, you know, I don't know this to be the case, but if that is what they were trying to do, because they're making the assessment that the fact that it's not a public road is what's preventing these properties from being developed? Do you follow me? It's, it's a conceivable, it's a conceivable rationale.
With anything, yes.
No, but from the town's perspective, if it's true, so that you let two lots combine, all of a sudden it became a public road, and we have seven more properties that get developed and put on the tax base.
And Bill, I know you wouldn't want the, the tail wagging the dog quite that much. And I would also observe, the developer has found the properties more marketable when the lots get bigger. So, the last few sales he's been able to make were, were two for ones.
Yeah.
I, I, it's not that I disagree with you, I just don't, as a blanket statement, say, say that I have a problem combining them.
I think, uh, I mean, the other thing too, is if we do put on the ballot the connecting portion, which is the, the portion of Hawthorne up until it hits Bayberry and then Bayberry, that's the road that would connect the two town roads. If that becomes a town road, then it seems to be, under what you're talking about, Jamie, that's gonna make the, the other spur up there more attractive to developers, because the, the town road is that much closer.
I hope so.
And, uh, and all you're gonna take is a couple more pieces up there, and then that road can get accepted as well.
I'm assuming the lot owners would see-
I mean, even though in this case, I'm, I'm sure the owners out there would like to have the road accepted by the town right now. Charlie's nodding over there.
No doubt, it'd be a good result for them.
I think that this, that, uh, an intermediate step would be a step in the right direction and would help out, you know, at some future time, but I-
Am I correct, it's only one more property that would have to sell for it to hit the twenty-five percent? And three would have to sell, be developed for it to hit the-
It looks like there's one, two, three, four. I can't tell.
Is there something on seven? There is.
Well, yeah, there's two, there's two developed parcels up there, it looks like.
So, they're already at-
Six and seven, so they're, they have eight, so they're at twenty-five percent. So, they have to develop two more, and then they would make the fifty. Then they would make the fifty percent for that section of the road. The other section makes the twenty-five percent.
Easily.
Easily, um, because it's, because it's a connecting road, so, um, that one has no problem at all, so.
So, the, um, the thing to do, having get, got the right people in the room, is make sure it's clear to the lot owners. You could wind up in a situation where the select board would put on a ballot some of the roads that you would like to be accepted. And you'd have to decide for yourselves, is it worth the effort to go around town and collect enough signatures and follow a pretty rigorous process with Linda here, the town clerk, to get a question on the ballot to do better? Uh, or would you let it ride, see how this goes for one annual town meeting and call that progress? You, you just have to-
Well, but just a minute, Jamie.
See if there's a meeting of the minds.
I mean, I think, I mean, can, can the voters go for a petition even if it, it doesn't meet the rule of the ordinance?
Voters can put whatever they want on the ballot. That's very challenging. You've seen some of those library questions.
No, but I'm talking, that's not the only way with the land use, I mean, you got a land use ordinance in force here. I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the voters can, can, uh, put something on there that contravenes the land use ordinance, can they?
The land use ordinance is not implicated in this question. The road acceptance ordinance.
Well, okay, the road acceptance ordinance. It's still an ordinance adopted by the town.
It's technically not a land use ordinance, which is where you're going with that.
Okay, but, but it's still an ordinance adopted by the town. It doesn't seem to me that, that the voters could, I mean, the voters could vote to repeal the ordinance if they wanted to. They have that power, but they can't, it's, an ordinance is in force. I don't see that they, that the voters have the right to contravene that, even if they gather a petition. Am I, am I incorrect?
I think you're observing just what, how difficult it would be, uh, but that what this ordinance is about is how do you get it on the ballot? I don't, you know, I don't know the rest. That's a more arcane legal question.
But, isn't it ultimately the?
Pardon me, Linda.
Yeah, thank you.
I believe it's ultimately up to the select board if they want to accept a petition that's, uh, presented by the citizens, to put on the warrant or not.
Well, actually, if it's a citizen's petition, we have to put it on the warrant. The question is, if it contravenes other ordinances, even if it's passed, can it go into effect? And that's what we need the town attorney to test to.
And I'm not sure it can.
We should, we should find out if the lot owners want to play that kind of brinksmanship first.
Well, because I'm, I'm perfectly willing to state here that I'm perfectly willing to put on the ballot the section of Hawthorne up to, up to Bayberry and Bayberry over there. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. That, that meets the ordinance, the way we wrote it, I'm perfectly fine with that. The issue I have is I don't think the other spur up there meets the ordinance.
I'll go a step further and say that I, I'll, I'll, I look forward to approving the rest of it as soon as the ordinance allows us to.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, if we were to re- this map is actually irrelevant because of this spur issue. There's a portion of it that doesn't connect the road.
Right, you need to recount.
So, am I correct that that property is eleven properties?
I count eleven on the Hawthorne issue.
So, now cut off the spur that goes to the cul-de-sac and count up properties.
Nine, ten, eleven, I see eleven.
Of which one, two, three, four are currently, or five are currently developed.
Right, or in the process of being developed.
But the fact that they would have passed the old test is kind of irrelevant.
Right.
And they meet, it meets the current ordinance.
The current ordinance.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, how complex is this process? Why wouldn't they do, I mean, isn't, isn't, isn't this better than none if it gets approved?
The parties are in the room. I can't, why speak for them?
Probably time to hear from the, from the folks that are up there right now. We, we blathered on long enough.
If you want to speak, please come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm, I'm Charlie Foot. I'm, uh, lot six, uh, up there.
Yep.
And my couple of concerns are, and number one, is it customary to accept only part of a road?
No idea.
If Hawthorne Drive, do you only accept part of a road, or is Hawthorne Drive Hawthorne Drive?
The ordinance allows it, because it says it's the private road or a portion of the private road. So, it does allow us to do that.
And number two, as we are now, uh, the burden of maintaining that road would be shared between a bunch of homeowners. If you go with the, uh, accepting only out to that new spur, then the burden of maintaining the rest of the road, which we all thought is one road, is two of us. For whether it be repaving or culverts or plowing or whatever. I think, I don't know what the, the length of that extension is from, uh, from the spur down to the cul-de-sac, but it, I mean, it's a matter of hundreds of feet. I don't know how big a deal it is to drive a couple hundred feet with a plow.
It's not that, right? It's the, it's the ordinance.
We have the ordinances for a reason.
Charlie, you should also keep in mind that all the lots are owned by somebody. The others are all in, in one individual's hands. That doesn't mean that, that there's no one responsible. So, that individual has five out of seven.
Well, I have three of them.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, and, and part of the thing is, we were origi- yeah, I'll, I'll get the, part of the, you know, originally, we were presented with the idea that Hawthorne ran from Winding Way to Ashley Terrace, that it was a different road that led off out to that spur, which you're now trying to claim is Hawthorne Way, which maps show it as Cliffside Drive.
Some maps do, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
So, my name is Yildikorab, and I'm the one who actually lives off Cliffside Drive. So, I know that, that third section is not Cliffside Drive, that's Hawthorne. And the other issue is if you don't make that little section, uh, public, which is like, really, as Charlie said, only like a hundred yard or so, we really don't have a chance, as far as I see, for that to be developed more. Because if you look at the, uh, lots that are on the left side, there's a pond in the middle and there's a cliff wall. There's no space to build there. I couldn't really see anyone to buy that land and build something there. And the other side, the three lots, uh, they all belong to Charlie. Um, and, uh, as far as I heard him, I actually tried to like, uh, merge those lots. He just bought three because they were so tiny. And that's pretty much it. Uh, the, if you start going up on Cliffside Drive, then on the left, there are two lots. Those are actually owned by people who live on Chickewaqui Pond. And they are never planning to build there. They are actually, you know, were even considering to pull that out of the, uh, development if possible. Uh, so, we don't really have a chance for any other houses to be there, and we are really talking about, uh, a hundred yard, which-
Well, I, I mean, I understand your situation. We have an ordinance. That's, we have to follow the ordinance, in my opinion. I mean, we can talk about changing the ordinance at some point. We have done that to hopefully, to work on resolving this situation. And maybe we didn't hit everything we had to hit.
If I could address the comments of Ms. Rab, uh, unfortunately, I, I see those as arguments against acceptance, because if the trending is towards fewer owners out there, the public interest decreases with each, you know, with, however, if these lots continue to combine and everyone has the intent of not developing them, the, uh, the chance that the return on investment to the voters, um, decreases. So, that's an interesting problem.
On the other hand, if the lots combine and, and you have, and you have four lots instead of eight lots, now you've got two, you get fifty percent, and, and the ordinance would allow it to be accepted.
Building a better ordinance has proven difficult, hasn't it?
I mean, part of the reason for the fifty percent threshold in the first part was that the, the town decided that they didn't want to have a road fully developed and have a lot more heavy construction equipment coming over it and ruining the road within the first couple of years because of construction of homes. That was the one, part of the rationale of having it there in the first place.
Any more lot owners willing to address the board?
Wishing, or wishing to.
Uh, Bob Duke, I presently live at Nine Hughes Street. Hopefully, I'll live on lot five sometime this year, once the weather breaks. And just a side note on Bayberry Lane, or what may be Bayberry Lane. Um, the confusion on this road was so immense that I called Jamie to say, I'm driving down the road right now and it says Ashley, but if I look out on Google Maps, it says Hawthorne. It was just really, really confusing, and I was thinking of it from the perspective of emergency response. If I had a fire at my house and they said Ashley Terrace, which actually it did, would you go to, would you go to the right, or would you go to the left towards the dufours, which are behind me? So, anyway, that was why I asked the question about the, the road. Um, the only point I would make, and I think, you know, and I respect the ordinance. The ordinance is what it is today. You know, and if they want to change the ordinance, or they want to petition the select board or the townspeople, that's fine. They can do that. I will say that many of those lots, um, to my new neighbor's perspective, are, they either need to be taken off the market, closed, consolidated, or whatever, because I see that future of a lot of those lots not buildable. And, uh, so, I- And, uh, so, I, I do think that Hawthorne should be fully accepted, but I understand the ordinance, so. Leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I don't wanna cut off public questions, but I have a question for you. So, I don't like the idea of writing ordinance around difficult examples. That, that's where variances and waivers are, are, are made for, right? If the ordinance is good, the ordinance is good, and it applies to almost all conditions. This is clearly a difficult situation. What is the mechanism by which, is, does a mechanism exist by which we could initiate or grant a variance to the road acceptance ordinance?
I don't, maybe Jamie can answer that question. I'm not sure.
I'd like to try.
And, and I think I, before you, before you start, because I've.
The first thing was a statement that you could agree with or disagree with, like, I, I mean, I don't wanna write ordinance around this.
I totally agree with you there, and that's why we struggle with how to, how to deal with this, and the connecting road idea came up. Because that's, that we felt was something that might apply in some other part of town as well, if you ever had a situation come up where you had a new road that connected two roads, and there's a public interest in being able to use that road and have public vehicles go across.
And if I, if I remember correctly, I think I even objected to that at the time, because I thought we were rewriting ordinance on the basis of a single example. It still feels like.
Well, I guess, I, I, we tried hard not to do that, because I, I, I understand the sentiment, but we thought that the way we wrote it, it might have applicability in other areas of town, where you had a situation where, again, you had a connecting road between two town roads. It made, especially if, you know, if you had, take the situation where, I don't know whether it even exists or not, but say you had two town roads that were five miles long, and they went out and then they dead-ended someplace. If you had a road at the five mile end that connected them, there's a public interest in having that be a public road, a greater one, because it allows you to get across there, whatever, instead of having to go all the way back in and then all the way back out again. So, okay, Jamie.
Thank you. The, um, my take on it is that, that, the question can get on the ballot, whether by petition or by you guys, even if it contradicts the ordinance. You guys have an ordinance here that tells you when you may put something on the ballot. And the, um, the only people with, with more leeway than you guys is the voters. The voters can put whatever they want on the ballot. Um, I imagine if it's contravening state law or, or the constitution, there might be problems. But, um, tho- either of you can contravene the ordinance, but you just lose influence if you start to ignore your ordinances.
Well, I, I think we would have to submit that to, to town council.
Of course we would.
I'm looking at the, at section four hundred, it says the applicant must comply with the following standards. That, that doesn't seem to allow any wiggle room to me.
The, and then the follow-through on that is, the reason it's possible to do by petition, just like you guys can put, um, uh, Linwood Thordike's old house on the warrant, you know, this is a really solemn, uh, uh, um, situation. Purchasing real property, and a road is the worst liability of all, but you can put them on the warrant. That's my assertion. But the, the, the voters can do it even easier by petition. It, the, it's very difficult legwork, but they are even less bound by the ordinance.
Well, I think. As we have seen with, say, for instance, the marijuana thing, they put on a petition, a citizen's petition to make marijuana legal, even though it's illegal. So, that has over, you know, that threshold has been overcome.
So, I would, I'd like to leave you with a thought about subdivisions in general, but I can wait till the wrap-up.
Um, I mean, my take on what we should do tonight, we still have some time.
Right.
We can still vote at a later meeting. I'd like to get a little clarity from the town attorney on this. Uh, because as I say, I'm perfectly comfortable with, with voting to place on the ballot and not asking the owners to go to the petition route for the, for the section from Hawthorne up through Bayberry, but not including the spur. I'm perfectly happy to do that. And then I think, you know, an opinion from the town attorney would be helpful on whether the, whether a petition, citizen's petition can come in that contravenes an ordinance that the voters have approved. I'd like to know that.
Okay. So, that question might not be raised this time around, but it's a good one.
When you say you're perfectly happy, what you mean is, it passes the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't matter whether, really, whether we're happy about it or not, right?
We have to vote, we could choose not to, we, in our prerogative, we could say, well, yeah, we pass as the ordinance, but we choose not to put it on the ballot. I, I, I am not suggesting that I would do that, or that it's necessarily a good thing for the select board to do, because we write the ordinance so that the, you know, the townspeople know what to expect.
So.
But it's not automatic necessarily.
I understand that this ordinance was carefully worded. I would observe that I still think you wrote it, rewrote it around this development.
Yes, you're right.
And for that reason, it sticks in my craw that we're contemplating approving a portion of this road. Now, I, I'm with you in following the ordinance.
I mean, the answer is.
But I think you tried to write a variance without writing a variance.
No, we wrote it in response to a concern from this neighborhood, but we wrote it with an eye to having applicability in other parts of town. Uh, and that's, I mean, we can disagree on that, I guess, cause I, I do think it could have applicability in other parts of town. And in, quite honestly, in the development of, of newer subdivisions, that might have more connecting roads. So, it might improve the more neighborhood feel, rather than spidery roads that go out in all directions, in my opinion.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I know, I, I owned a lot in Spring Mountain Development. And it, being part of that association, uh, we had private roads that everyone in that association paid for maintaining, snowplow, whatever, cutting br- brush and whatnot. And if, in fact, this goes down the path where this, that, I'll call it spur, in front of Mr. Foot's house and down Cliffside, becomes such an issue, it flies in the face of the ordinance, that the solution to that part of it, of maintaining it, doesn't rest with Mr. Foot and whoever lives on Cliffside, it rests with those in phase four.
Yeah.
And, cause right now, currently, there are no assess, there's no assessments being levied on anybody. Um, and the association is basically one man.
That's, the developers maintains the roads currently, correct?
Right, and it, and it is our, as Jamie mentioned, it is our intention to, I'll say, wrest control of that portion of, of the development, so, just food for thought, that's all.
Okay, well, that, that's helpful, actually. Thank you.
All right, um, do we have a desire to do anything at this point?
I think, um, getting advice from the town attorney on the, on the question of the petition route would be helpful before we make our decision as to what to put on the ballot.
So, those questions, can we be a little bit more specific about what we're gonna ask? We're asking.
I wanna know whether, first of all, whether the townspeople, if the townspeople present an article by petition to be placed on the warrant that contravenes an ordinance that the town has already previously adopted, what happens? That's, that's basically the only question I have, cause I think the ordinance otherwise is clear.
So, I'd, I'd also like to know with total clarity whether we can do the same.
Good question, yeah. Okay, can we contravene the ordinance? I don't know whether I would necessarily, but, but it's a good question to ask.
In this example, I, I'm inclined to think that I would, eh, for reasons that I've described, but mostly I wouldn't. Um, but, but the question is the same.
So, if we could get clarity on those questions from town council, and then, and then take it up at the next meeting, still in time to get it on the ballot, get something on the ballot for June, because I, like I say, I, the only, the sticking point for me is the spur.
Well, yeah, and I, I, I don't know that this is anything for town council, but I, I'd also like a, to understand better the economics of the situation that we're putting those couple of property holders in. I mean, if, if, if it was a situation where we were about to take action, such that we significantly increased the burden of two property owners, I'm not sure I can support that decision.
Well, that would be, that would be, I think we'd have to hear from the intentions of the lot owners up there, and how that would, you know. So, perhaps you guys can do your research and let us know. I think what, what Bob said was different than what Charlie said. Uh, in other words, Bob seems, seems to think that the entire phase four, the subdivision, would be responsible for maintaining that part of the road that wasn't yet accepted by the town.
You're set up to become a condominium association, in effect, for the whole.
I can help with the mechanics on that. Only the planning board can set them free. You cannot amend the plan without the planning board. So, for now, it is nineteen lots, eighteen of which have road frontage.
So, in that regard, then, if we accept the portion that I'm talking about as a town road, then the burden, monetary burden on all of the residents would decrease. Because the.
That's right.
They would then have to maintain.
Less road.
About one-third as much road as, as they do currently.
And the, you know, the legal ramifications have less significance than the kind of transactional ones after a certain point, because we would have no way to compel the developer to keep up with maintaining the road. Uh, that, we don't hold a performance guarantee. Um, the, the lot owners really don't need any more, um, help resting control, so to speak, um, because they have a written permission from, uh, the developer, along with every other lot owner, to pursue road acceptance. Whether they could get the same to get a, an amended plan approved at the, at the planning board, we don't know.
I'm gonna pull a Steve Beveridge at this point, a little history. Um, Sea Light Lane came before the board, I wanna say it was in two thousand eight or two thousand and nine, asking to be accepted. They had already approached the board several years before, and had received permission to be, go on the ballot until it was found out that their covenants said that they couldn't do that, so they had to change it. Well, when they came back, they came back with all of their covenances revised, so that they could become a town road. It was then stood up during our public hearing and said, oh, by the way, the far end of it is more than the six percent grade, and therefore, you can't waive that part of the ordinance, you know. Is this gonna be any different? And I'm just, just.
Well, that's what we, that's what we wanna find out.
Yeah, that's what we wanna find out. Yeah, the ordinance says certain things. So, um, I will also wanna make one other comment before we move on. Um, if we do hear back from the, um, attorney, and this goes on our, uh, March twenty-seventh agenda, we only are gonna have three people here then, also. You're out, and Jeff is on jury duty, so he won't be here either. So, we'll be again at three people, and.
That is also not our last opportunity to do this, though, is it?
It's getting close. Linda, what's, what's?
Again, we'd have to, we'd have to think about this, because the planning board has to. But our next meeting would be April tenth, and wouldn't this be something that have to go to the planning board? And I know Jeff's not here to answer. It's a land use issue.
No, it isn't. It's a road acceptance ordinance. So, I don't, I don't think it would have to go to the planning board.
It's not an ordinance amendment at all.
No.
Oh, it's just a warrant, it's just a warrant article.
It's a warrant article.
Since you're, we're delaying the process a bit, decision process, I guess I'm thinking about if the, if my neighbors want to go the petition route, what's our deadline for that? You're concerned about your deadline, we're concerned about our deadline.
We take our final votes to put things on the warrant on April tenth.
Just think about your neighbors, okay, cause we have, we would have work to do, where all you have is one decision.
Right.
Is there, is there anything stop, I mean, I'm, is there anything stopping us from scheduling another meeting in be- in between now and then, sooner? In order that, where we can all.
Take action tonight on the lesser segment.
Oh, but I, I really wanna get the clarity from the town attorney. I think that's helpful for everybody concerned, so that we, you know, we're, we're voting with, knowing what we're voting on and things of that nature.
I'm not comfortable taking action on, uh, an if and a maybe.
You know, to that extent, it's not relevant whether or not I'm comfortable.
Just on the lesser portion, but, the, so this group knows, it's not, it's not done yet. No one can tell you.
I think we're gonna, we're making progress. I think that's what we could say.
I'd like to get that road accepted, if we're gonna accept any of it.
Well, if there's a way, we'll find out if there's a way to do it.
Yep. Okay, and I, so I apologize for my part in, I'm gonna be away, but I will make, I will make myself available if we have that information and can take the next step.
Okay.
You already knew you were gonna be away, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has come up. It's no, no fault on yours. And, of course, Jeff has been called to jury duty, so he can't get out of that, much as he'd like, I think.
Where is he?
Uh, he's, he had an emergency tonight.
No, 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 I mean, the jury duty.
Portland.
So, he might not even have to go, cause I didn't.
Oh, he's been all, he's already been told he has to be there all week.
Oh.
That's what he told me. All right, let's move on to the next one. This is consideration a request by Greg Haning for a zoning amendment to permit residential development in the West Rockport Business Park. And we have Mr. Haning here tonight. So, um, Jamie, do you wanna introduce this first?
I didn't type all right.
Well, John is my contact information.
Thanks.
I'm not looking to change it to residential.
No, but to permit it.
It's already permitted. All we wanna do is change.
You're right. It, this, this is not to, it's already permitted, it's in the zone that permits residential.
Right, it's mixed business.
It's misuse, it's.
Just a change to the road frontage.
Change the front, required frontage, yes.
Would you like to go first?
It would be more marketable if you had more lots. We understand.
Okay, so, I guess my only, um, in doing some research, well, we, we've changed from doing the business park, we're changing now to residential. All the brokers are telling us we can sell house lots, we can't sell the business lot at all. So, in, uh, looking at the street frontage, we discovered in the, uh, in your table, in the, uh, land use ordinance, all the zones that have, um, all the zones have a category called minimum street frontage. And then the zones that have frontage on routes one seventeen ninety have another footage for that. Our one zone, nine oh seven, only lists the one frontage as two hundred feet in, in the minimum. So, we're asking if, if, um, if that can be changed to one hundred, and then move the two hundred down to if we border on Route seventeen ninety and one.
That's it, but you might wanna zoom in, Ken.
Uh, the, the, I, the note one apparently is not here. I don't know what note one says.
Oh, no, it's, if you go with those two columns, two rows, you'll see it. Two different kinds of frontage.
Oh, okay, yeah, here we go.
Right. One of those NAs where the ORC's never filled a blank.
So, the way I would assume their intent was, that they thought that all of the nine oh seven zone bordered on Route seventeen one and ninety. And our subdivision is a secondary road, dead-end road off there.
Right, yeah.
Can you scroll up, just so I understand how that table works?
It's the, it's the, sorry.
There's several other NAs on either side. Alright, so those are other zonings on either side, that also share several other NAs for that second category.
In other words, it, there was no, uh, this, uh, minimum street frontage, and then minimum street frontage on Route one seventeen ninety in Old County. So, that was a, if, if you were on one seventeen or ninety, you had a different minimum street frontage, and some zones.
I'm looking to, to, if there, if the rationale here is true, go one column to the left, nine oh six, which also has seventy-five an NA.
Right.
Is that because there is no frontage on one seventeen and ninety in nine oh six?
No, it would mean that this, this frontage requirement was the same, I think. Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was, there was no difference, so that it was the same.
Well, that would be blank, as opposed to not applicable, right? This is what NA stands for.
Yeah, it's, it's maybe a problem with the table, but I think that's the intent.
I do believe there's a big problem with the table, and the, 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 the ORC has spent maybe the last four years since, um, creating a table, using it as a way to find bugs. Because there wasn't a table before.
Okay.
And so, I couldn't tell you, does NA mean, mean there's no frontage requirement? You can't really imagine that it's zero, or does NA mean it's the same as the other? So, this is an important weakness, um, that, that Greg has found in the ordinance, and he's not the first.
I mean, the ORC basically has one week left, as I understand our timing. Is that correct, Jamie?
Yeah, uh, the public hearing on the sixth for the planning board, and the, the fifth.
So, we meet this Thursday, and I would submit that if the ORC thinks this is a simple problem, and it would just, all we would have to do today is task it to the ORC to look at it. If they think it's simple and they can get it done in one meeting, if they, if, if what Greg says is makes sense to them, uh, then, then they could recommend it back to us, and we could make the change. And the, and the ORC, having worked with them for a while, and you go, you have.
The ORC would make the change.
They would make the recommendation to.
Of the change, yes.
And then it would come back in their package. So, all we would have to do right now, this is not on the work plan for this year.
I understand.
We would just have to say it tonight. We would have to vote to put it on the work plan, and, and if they can get it done in one week, they can get it done in one week, and then it can come back with everything else to us, and we can get it on the ballot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable pushing something on at the last minute, and asking them to react with only minimal, cause they, they're gonna meet in three days.
Right.
And we got storm day tomorrow.
If, they've got two Thursdays left before the planning board's public hearing, but I'll be posting the ads after only one more ORC meeting.
What Brendan said is key, is I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with asking. The ORC has never been shy about coming back to us and saying, you know what, that's too much, we can't do it.
Yeah.
Um, they could very well do that. They could say, this needs more consideration.
I agree with you.
So, I don't have any problem with.
What's the unintended con- What's the unintended consequence here?
I haven't even done that preliminary analysis.
And I, and I agree, you know, maybe they have two meetings to go because the planning board can change the wording of the ordinance at their public hearing and then we can change it again at our final vote if we will.
As long as the ad gives the average person a reasonable.
The ad is, is a draft ordinance, it can be changed before it goes to ballot.
Yeah.
So you guys are the ones to say if it's worth doing, the ORC can tell you, do we have time or don't we in this short ORC season?
Well, I mean, independent, this, this individual has brought up a, a significant problem. It sounds like others have brought it up in the past, so I don't know why it hasn't been addressed in the past, but we can ask for a clarification about what those NAs mean that are entirely separate from this one citizen's request, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and so Ken, I want to ask you because I don't know anything about their, their process. How specific, you, you said ask them to look at it and if it's simple, how, how specific a request do you want to make of them?
I would just, I would make the request that they consider their, their issue brought up by Mr. Haning and, and look at those two rows of the table. And they show up here and they show up.
Well, the next one just, it's, it's just shows what the change would be.
Right.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that's the, this is the suggested change.
One existing and one proposed.
So, so I, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to narrow what they're allowed to, to look at, but I might go a step further to say, can you help us understand whether NA means no change or not applicable?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I, I think we can ask them to consider just those two rows of the, of the dimensional table and, uh, in, in light of Mr. Haning's request and in light of the select board's question about the NA.
But I, I do not want them to be taking time away from other tasks that we've already said that we want to have done, just to look at this one. You know, if they're behind a power curve here on getting a couple of the things done that we have already set for them, that has to take priority.
Um, I mean, we looked at the whole work plan, the last meeting and looked at, and as, as is the case often with a work plan, we've gotten through an awful lot. We've come to a few items that, that the committee, and Jamie, you correct me if, if your interpretation was different, we've gotten to a couple of items that, that the committee has said, we don't have time to do these.
That's understandable.
You know, given the short time that's left, um, and that, that's, and some of them are, are issues that are not pressing or, you know, things that would be nice to fix, but there, there are no issues that are breathing down their necks or anything like that. So I, I understand what you're saying, in other words, but I think they're almost to the point where there's not much more that can be done in the time that's left and, and consideration of this request would be.
If you have five huge tasks and a small amount of time left and then three little tasks, but you can complete them.
Yeah, exactly.
You go complete them.
Yeah, exactly, and I think that that's where we would be with this.
But again, not to take precedence on anything else that they can complete or reasonably think that they can complete.
Okay.
Yeah, is that sufficient guidance?
Do you need a motion, Jamie? Do we need to make a motion to add it to the work plan or are we okay with our discussion? I'm okay with the discussion personally.
I mean, you're the liaison, right?
Yeah, you're the liaison, you know what we want.
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with it.
And, you know, if it, you know, it's got to go back to the ORC because this is a land use issue.
Yep.
And, and if they don't feel that they can deal with it and argue through their way, that's fine.
Yep. Well, what we'll do likely is, is get out, because just as Brendan says, you don't want to make an ordinance for one particular situation and what the ORC will do, I've worked with them enough to know, they're going to get the zoning map out.
Yeah, and as well they should.
Look at the whole zone and see what does this impact and what are the possible.
And that's what we need to do.
We know what the consequences will be for you, is it'll help you in your development potential, which the ORC likes to do, but what will be, what will happen someplace else.
Which, which, I mean, is, is the same is true for, for the winding way subdivision, right? That, that if, if it turns out there is some precedent for us to, uh, create a variance or put something on the ballot that contravenes ordinance, well, I'd be looking to Jamie, I guess, uh, for, all right, so what other headaches is that going to cause for us if we do that?
Nine oh seven is a large area.
Yep.
And there is a lot other that needs to be considered, considered in that.
We'll take a look at it and, and some of it is Jamie's analysis too of what are the current existing uses, because the other thing we like to do in the ORC is to reduce non-conformities as much as possible, uh, you know, non-conforming areas, so. So if you're comfortable with me taking the message to the ORC, I'm happy to do that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. It would be great if you did actually, Thurs-.
Seven o'clock?
Uh, eight o'clock.
They like to sleep in these days.
Been a years on that board, I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'm going to suggest here, instead of going to item G, setting the date for our next meet, the library's next steps meetings, is to move to item H because we have Ronald Johnson here.
Okay.
And let us get with the, the rest of our attendance, public, public attendance. So Mr. Johnson, would you step up here? Um, you have requested to make a payment arrangement on your property taxes.
Yes.
Um, Linda, you're the person here that has the full understanding of what this arrangement is going to be. Can you explain it to us so we understand completely?
Okay, um, Mr. Johnson and I have had a couple of conversations. Um, you have a copy of his letter requesting, um, your permission to extend his thirty-day exemption. What typically happens, we foreclose on the property, we give somebody thirty more days to pay, um, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and one half of two thousand sixteen. He has already brought to me a check for one thousand dollars and then he's also brought me a check for fifty dollars and he is willing to make an agreement to pay twenty-five dollars per week until he's current. I think the balance is something like eight hundred dollars or, or a little bit less.
Okay, now is that based with interest being paid or stopping interest payment at this point and continuing?
Interest never will stop.
Right.
So the interest will.
I understand that interest.
That's all the gall.
But it's on a lesser amount, so.
Okay.
But that makes, what he has paid so far has made a big dent in what he needed to pay. So the balance would be, um, eight fifty-nine ninety-nine minus the fifty dollars, so it's just a little over eight hundred dollars he still owes, which is, we've made agreements with other people, so I would recommend that we allow him.
And whatever balance is due at this time next year, if there's any balance due, I'd probably pay off the rest with my income tax again.
So my only.
I'd like to be current, by this time next year, I'd like to, like, be.
I guess my, my question is, and I haven't done the math in my head yet, but at twenty-five dollars a week, is he, are you going to be current by the time the next tax bill comes due? Or are you going to be, is, are you going to fall farther behind?
He doesn't need to be current with that, he just needs to have it paid up, um, before the next foreclosure comes, he needs to be paid up.
Just dividing eight hundred by twenty-five dollars is thirty-two.
Right.
So it'd be probably closer with interest to thirty-five or, to forty weeks.
Right.
So.
I believe it's doable.
Okay.
Definitely.
And as you said, that when you get your next tax refund, a year from now, you'll finish paying it off.
Yes.
Okay. It's not our desire to push people out of their homes.
Not at all.
Yeah, I, I didn't intend to get this far, I just started out behind and I just, it's kicking the can down the road and I just like to stop kicking.
Yeah. So, um.
Well, I'll move to approve the request by Ronald Johnson for a payment arrangement on his property taxes as described.
A second.
Move then, second. Do we have any further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you for taking, uh, taking the bull by the horns and taking care of it, we appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Okay, um.
Thank you, Linda, very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Then let's go back to discussing our next steps for the library. We need to keep moving this forward. If nothing else, we need to make the statement, are we going to try to put something on the June warrant or not? If we decide not, then we have to decide what we're going to do and how we're going to proceed to maybe a November vote. If we decide to put it on, we have to decide how we're going to proceed and, and what we're going to do to get to that point where we can have something ready to go on to the warrant and sent to the printers at the end of April. So I'll open this to discussion.
Um, I think a lot of this we want to do in a workshop format. I'm perfectly willing to, to make the decision tonight not to vote in June because I just don't think there's enough time. I think we heard that in our meetings, we heard about people making fundraising and things of that nature, that they need more time for whatever proposal we come up with for the people to understand it and, and learn about it and, and perhaps to have their minds changed. Uh, and that was going to be the case no matter where we went for the site, I believe, so. But I think, I mean, all this stuff that's, that's here on, on the, uh, this stuff all needs to be talked about, but I, I think we need, would be better off doing that in a workshop format. Um, if you want me to make a motion on the date tonight, I certainly, I'm happy to do that. I'll wait for further discussion.
Before we go to motion, let's have further discussion.
If you guys will, if you guys will bear with me, I think that, again, the issue of process is at the center of this. And I wrote, uh, you both letters asking to hear how and why a recent meeting about the library was canceled. Um, to me, I think part of what is at the center of the contention around the library is the perception that there are individuals or groups of individuals who have, um, an, an outsized ability to influence the process, uh, ability to influence the process that is out of proportion to what, uh, any individual citizen or, or collection of citizens should have. We received, well, uh, let me tell you what I observed and ask if I have it correct. A meeting was scheduled in order to, amongst other things, hear from the public about a proposal that was put in front of the select board. I received a letter from the three individuals who put forth that proposal in which they made an observation about the, the timber of the conversation, that, that they, that they felt that public comment, public discussion, further public discussion would, would not be helpful at this time. And they made a request that we cancel the meeting. About thirty minutes after I received that letter, I received a letter that the meeting had been canceled. My perception of those events are that three members of the public wrote a letter to the select board requesting that a public meeting be canceled and then a public meeting was I think part of the fulcrum here is a perception that, that proposal about the Scott property had been withdrawn. But when I read the letter, I find that it hasn't been withdrawn. So we're independent of whether we share the assessment that public conversation would be unhelpful. Going back to process, it still troubles me that a public meeting was canceled at the request of three individuals.
It was the three individuals that we were meeting to hear from regarding the details of their proposal as it would affect anything that would go to or have to go to a vote of the citizens in June. Yet, you're right, they didn't, they didn't say that they're withdrawing their offer on the property, that is a private arrangement between those three people.
The letter says, at this time, we are not terminating our option to purchase with the Scots, but we would like more time to look ahead, to see what develops and to consider other possibilities. That to me is a perfectly reasonable request, that's what they would like.
Mm-hmm.
I disagree with your assessment that the purpose of that meeting was to meet with those three individuals and hear more from them.
It was also to hear the reaction of the public to their proposal and then for us to make a decision based on the proposal and what we heard from the public.
So I feel that we actually heard from them about that proposal on two separate occasions. We have not heard from the public about it. I'm not going to browbeat anymore about this, but it is the process, not the outcome, that bothers me. And my perception is, again, three individuals effectively canceled a public meeting that had been scheduled, it got canceled day of, thirty minutes after the request, and I take issue with that.
Your point is noted.
So to the extent that we're talking about how to move ahead, I'd like to go back and have the meeting that we said was essential to have, because I think we made a decision recently wherein we adopted one big parking problem that we already knew existed. And for my part, I'd like to hear from the public about the ways in which it will be acceptable to the public to address that parking problem. I have no objection to, to a solution that everybody espouses or, or enough people espouse that, that this is going to pass with flying colors. But at the very beginning of this process, we said to ourselves, we're not going to do anything that we don't believe will pass. We've got a big parking problem, we have no idea how to fix it in a way that we know will pass. How can we do that without talking to the public?
I have to agree with your assessment that we have a big parking problem. The design that was put forward had virtually as many spaces available for parking as what is down there at the current, at the temporary site on Commercial Street.
I think.
There may be a difference of two or three parking places.
I think we've heard from plenty of people that it's not just the number of spaces, it's the quality of getting in and out of your car on a level flat site. And, and again, I don't have a desired outcome here, but I don't want to waste our time doing anything that we don't believe the public is going to respond, that when I stood up there and I, and I, and I sort of advanced this idea, if at any point we got to a place where we believe the public is not going to back this, we had to go back, we said we would go back and revisit the decision. I don't want to go back and revisit the site decision if we've got a solution here, but we have to find out that we have a solution here.
So what you're proposing is that we hold.
The meeting that we already scheduled.
A meeting or workshop where we solicit input from people regarding the three Lime Rock Street Scott property.
Your email when you canceled the meeting, or I, I say you, I assume it was you.
That was me.
When you canceled the meeting said that it had been canceled and it had not yet been rescheduled. Is there any intention to reschedule it or had it just been canceled without?
That is for us to decide tonight. I, I canceled it because they weren't going to appear. I'll take ownership of that. I didn't think there was a need for us to continue to meet, um, on that issue at that point since they were effectively putting it on hold, even though they were keeping their option to purchase open, which is a private enterprise, private item.
So let's, let's observe that for a second.
Okay.
You say they are effectively putting it on hold.
Yes. Their, the current option, as I read that contract expires the first or the fifteenth of August or July or something like that. That's the way that option right now sits. They've got five thousand dollars, if I read it right, on the line, that the earlier they withdraw their request for the option, I, I assume they get money back, that's, but that's only what I think I have heard. If they go all the way to that point and they don't make the actual offer, their five thousand dollars is, is gone and the option ceases or terminates. Now, what they want to do to extend it or anything else, that's their choice, they're private citizens. They were trying to make an offer to the town in hopes of moving something forward. And as they said, you know, they, they thought that things were getting complicated and they'd like to step back. Now, that put aside, if we still want to hear from people about what they think of us accepting the offer, if it is made, regarding that three line. regarding that three Lime Rock or the Scott property, as we refer to it, that's fine. You know, we can hold that and, you know, as part of any other meeting, we can start out with public comment on this topic and then move to public comment on that topic if we want, or just move to our own discussion on whatever we want to set for that. But we need to move this forward. And a decision whether we're gonna go to vote in June or November has got to be the first thing because it's gonna tell us how fast we have to move, or what else might be able to be accomplished in the interim. Now, do you wanna hear from them? We can schedule. That's not a problem. I just wanna know when. Or when we think we'd like to get together.
Ken, I feel like I've said my piece.
Okay.
I mean, from what I understood from the email that we got from the folks at Advance of Proposals, they were pulling it back for the short time. They made it very clear in there that they were not gonna release their option at this point. And in speaking with some of them, I think they wanted to see where we were gonna go. I said when we chose the site, that we had to choose the site knowing full well or assuming that we would not have that extra property available. We had to be comfortable with the possibility of developing a library on that site, and I addressed the parking problems. I think we have to address those. I don't know that that property is the only solution to the parking problem. We have to address it, and I even said we have to be willing to give up some more of the park because we have to address that. And again, I didn't make the decision to cancel the meeting, but I did actually support it because I don't know how the public comment would've gone knowing that the folks wouldn't have shown up and that that implication would've been to the public, that they were pulling the property back. We heard from some of the public about the property prior to that. Process, I do believe, is important, and I think we have to be very careful as to how we set out the process going forward, as to what we do next. I have had a personal communication from one of the members of that group who presented to us about the Scott property saying that they would like us to move ahead with the process on the one Lime Rock site with the idea that that group may have that, may still be willing to do something with that property with the town, should we decide that it's necessary. So we have that to sort of keep at the back of our mind. Whether it's used for a parking lot or not, that raised a lot of objections from the neighbors. We heard that. But possibly it becomes useful in some other way, shape, or form. I think as far as our process goes, we've got to move forward with looking at the one Lime Rock site that we selected and start the process of seeing what we can do on that site irrespective of the three Lime Rock property. And so that's what I would like to do in a workshop that we set soon. I do think we have, in my opinion, we have to take the June ballot question off the table as soon as possible so that we have some idea that we're not gonna try to do that. I think that that would be a mistake to try to vote in June. We just, in my opinion, just simply don't have the time to get a proposal out in time for the voters and those who might be contributing on the private funds to make a decision. Because, as we saw in the past, if they don't have, if folks don't have enough time to make a decision, then they're gonna choose to vote against it because they feel they can't support it because they don't have enough information. So, I think moving the process forward is the next step, and that's gonna have to be at a workshop. Again, I'm perfectly happy to make a motion on a vote, a timing of a vote thing tonight. And I'll just make the motion and see if it gets seconded or not. If it doesn't, then we'll drop it. But I would move that a vote on a potential plan for a library occur no earlier than November of 2017.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
All right, moved and seconded in November 2017.
No earlier than.
No earlier than.
In other words, we could choose to delay it later if we want to. That's deliberate. I think at this point, trying to rush something in for June is, I've said it many times, I think it's gonna lead to failure for us or for the town. I'll leave it at that.
So for the purposes of discussion, and again, because I care about process, I wouldn't wanna do this with three of the five of us here. I pretty strongly disagree with the sentiments that Jeff offered when we talked about this last. However, I think it's happenstance that he's not here. And since I'm gonna be away myself at a meeting, I would prefer that decisions of this magnitude not happen with three members present.
If I understand it, you will be here
I'm going from the twenty-third to the thirty-first.
The twenty-third, yes, from a week from Thursday.
Twenty-third to the thirty-first, I'll be gone.
Which leaves, and I'm gonna say, we can't do it on the twenty-second because we've got a mid-co-solid waste board and really have to be there for that. Owen and I do.
Unless there is any confusion about my opinion, I agree with everything you said. I just don't wanna vote on it with three of us.
We could have a workshop on the twentieth or twenty-first. The twentieth, I show nothing on for us on the select board. The twenty-first, the budget committee has their meeting, and actually, though I say it's six PM on my sheet, they're starting actually at four-thirty.
On the twenty-first?
On the twenty-first. They have to, they hope to be able to complete their discussions and
I'm sorry, what starts at four-thirty on the twenty-first?
The budget committee meeting
Budget committee.
Regarding the budget that we will present to them starting Wednesday.
But that's not a budget workshop, it's budget committee.
It's for the budget committee.
Yep.
It's not, we can go if we want.
No, I follow you.
Or we can say, you know, we're gonna go and do our own thing that night.
The twentieth, I will be flying back into town. I probably will be here by the evening, but when you're dealing with airlines, who knows?
And one person I know has told me we're gonna have a snowstorm on the twentieth. You're the expert. I'm not. I just heard what he said.
Not like tomorrow's, but I'm gonna suggest, given again that there are only three of us here tonight, that you as the chairman poll the board by email. We can do that by email. We can schedule a meeting by email. It doesn't fall foul of that seems to make more sense.
For clarity, that was poll the board for a date.
Right.
Okay. I tell you, you guys are hard.
Holding your feet to the fire. And given that, I will withdraw my motion.
If the second withdraws his motion?
Withdraw your second.
Oh, yeah, I withdraw my second. Is that true? You have to withdraw the second if the motion's withdrawn? That seems
Because if you insist on carrying it forward, it goes forward. That's Robert's rules, okay?
Sure, yeah, okay.
I withdraw my motion if the second agrees. Oh, I agree, that's not a problem.
The second agrees.
Okay.
And I admire your your sense of process and of including the whole board. I think that's commendable.
Okay. So so we, we're not comfortable either in setting a date for anything. I will poll the board. I heard you said poll the board.
Preliminary, the twenty-first works for me, or the twentieth, or whatever it was, twenty-first.
Probably okay for me. I'd rather avoid the Tuesday, but I'd, again, I'm
Otherwise, we're waiting until into April. Because you and Jeff will both be gone. So, all right, very good. We now, if we agree, we're done with this topic?
Well, we're not done, but we're done for enough.
Done for tonight.
You're gonna go on the list of doing the wordsmithing for everything from now on, too. The next time, we have our consideration of two quick claim deeds for foreclosed properties. And Linda has prepared for us the memo on that.
I move to approve the quick claim deeds for the properties of Michael Vincent and Mary Lemoine, Sammaset Resort, MAP T-02, Lot A-16-012 and Joshua Cabral, Sammaset Resort, MAP T-01, Lot B-04-008.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, if I'm correct, Linda, they are paying up their taxes, or is this
There's something strange about the Sammaset, right?
It is strange, but because that property's foreclosed on, anytime property's foreclosed on, we can't do a regular lien discharge, we have to do a quick claim deed, giving it back to the individuals. Because technically, as of the foreclosure, it belongs to the town of Rockport, or in the case of Timeshares, they belong to the Sammaset. So we're giving it back to the individuals.
And they've paid in full.
They have paid it in full.
So we have to give something back to the individual that went to the Sammaset?
Right, because that's part of the agreement with Timeshares.
I didn't understand the last time. I don't understand it.
Well, we have the legal jurisdiction to do it. They don't.
But effectively, they paid off
Yeah, we did it before and everything.
And we have to sign the thing here.
We have to sign it, yep.
So, the motion is
Motion's been seconded.
Motion is seconded. All in favor? Move that one back. We have a request to sign a safety policy mission statement. Rick sort of explained this to you. This is a procedural issue to do it, and we can stay in the good graces of certain areas and places. Apparently, NIMS has something to do with this. So I see no problem with doing it.
I'll put on my wordsmithing hat.
Okay.
In the second paragraph, and I don't, maybe this will cause a problem, I don't know, but it says "all accidents to personnel." I would suggest all accidents involving personnel. No matter.
You can't do an accident to someone.
But it may be something that, you know, maybe it doesn't even involve personal injury, but on any accident at all, it seems to me should be reported.
And as I understand, the way Rick explained it to me, this is pretty much boilerplate. It's taken from somewhere else and changed the name to recognize that it's Rockport.
So
It also, excuse me, it also, at the last paragraph, permits the town manager to change the mission statement without our approval. Point that out.
That's actually a little bit of a not that I but the select board sets policy. I mean, that's laid out in the charter. That is, that's a little bit of an issue.
If you wanna strike the last paragraph, we can.
Strike the last sentence.
Or make it, "The mission statement can only be changed with approval of the select board."
Well, that goes without saying, it seems to me.
So Megan accidentally staples her finger.
Yep.
She must report this immediately to the department head, and a written report will be made on a form for that purpose.
Yes, I agree that's the way it's written.
I'm not gonna vote for that. I understand the sentiment, but
Well, I think, I mean, the problem is
Matter how minor?
I mean, what happens if three weeks later she gets tetanus? Her tetanus shot wasn't up to date, to use your example.
And we're gonna use the fact that that written report didn't happen as a justification for ignoring our obligation to someone who was actually harmed at work?
No, I don't think that's the point. I think the point is
I've seen instances, this is in my past history, where, you know, somebody is, you know, going to a door and the door flies open because somebody's coming the other side. They jam their arm. Oh, no big deal, you know, I'll go off. And the next morning, it's all swollen up. Well, they didn't report it immediately because they didn't think they had any harm done. You know, it works both ways.
Where's this coming from? Why is this in front of us?
It's part of the NIMS, National Incident Manag-, I think.
Well, that's what he says.
Linda can imply that. It's part of the certification, and also I think it's some of the insurance stuff that we're doing in order to get a better insurance rating and things like that.
Because on workers' comp, you have so many hours to report an accident. So, I mean, yes, she might get, put a staple in her finger, or maybe you get a paper cut, but you never know. You may get an infection from that, and then if you haven't reported it, workers' comp can say, "You didn't report it. We don't have to cover it." So it kind of protects
Your perception is that this protects the employee.
I think it protects the town, too.
That's what I think. I think this protects the town potentially at the expense of the employee.
Well, I'm not so sure about that because the employee, you know, if the workers' comp doesn't cover it, then the employee is in some difficulty, too. That sort of thing, so. And I think in general, it's good practice. I don't think there's any question about that.
If you rather, we can table this. Of course, our next meeting is gonna be without you and Jeff.
Oh, look, if
We can table it till April. I don't see, you know, an issue. We've been this long without one. Holding this off until April is
No, I'd love to be able to vote against this and have it pass anyway if you think it
If you vote against it, and even if we vote for it, it fails.
Well, I think maybe having Rick here to explain a little bit better might be good, too.
Maybe that's helpful.
Yeah, so.
I'll table this to the tenth. Is that?
Yeah, I'm not trying to kick the can, but I am gonna kick the can.
That's okay.
Hey, you know, if we're not in agreement, let's not be in agreement. We're now at item K. Rick's not here to explain this. I'd like to table that until the tenth, well. Rick and Jamie attended a workshop, and actually, we have some of the information on it here from Drummond and Woodson, but it's just the bullet points.
Just like a PowerPoint.
Yeah. And without them here to explain what went on and what transpired and what's coming, what's developing actually out there in the world would be very difficult.
Nothing pressing here time-wise either.
I don't think so.
Okay, well.
You know, unless all of a sudden the law court comes down and says, "Oh, you gotta do this and that." I don't think so. Again, table it to the tenth.
That's fine.
Looks like we don't have any wastewater.
And we do not have the wastewater yet, so that has to sit. So typically do not do our liaison reports at this meeting. I do wanna make some reminders here. We need to take our picture for the annual report. So if you will come dressed appropriately at April tenth meeting, we can have that done. Remind your committee chairs, need to have an annual report, and they need to get it to Stacy. I'm not sure what her deadline is. But they can look at past annual reports to find out what the format of their memos usually take.
I've already mentioned that to Mike.
And who wants to draft this year's report? I sort of threw it out there a week or so ago, and I haven't heard anything from anybody. I didn't even respond to it.
What's the deadline for it?
Sometime in mid-April.
I can try to throw something together, I guess.
Okay. Remember, you left it to me last year, and it went on and on and on and on and on.
Yeah, and I rewrote it.
And it still went on and on and on.
We can skip the first step of the process this time.
April tenth is when we're taking our photos?
Yeah, that's the next select board meeting. We all supposedly will be here.
And appropriate dress does not include a tie.
Well, it can, if you want.
But it doesn't for me.
I put that in there for our absent legislator. I understand it's been called on the carpet for his dress. But anything else?
I will just, under liaison reports, just mention briefly that Legacy Rockport tried to have a meeting last week.
That might be the first one in my tenure.
First one in a long time, but the goal was made. Somebody wasn't there. Hang your head, but the goal was made, and I suggested to them that they need to schedule a meeting at a regular day and time every month, and they are recommitting to get that organization back up and off the road. It may end up being a very critical organization for the library, too.
Anything you wanna pass along, since you're not gonna be here next month, next meeting?
No, I actually think you guys have been at the budget workshops, and we got a fair bit about the harbor committee from Abby in terms of the things that they've been working on and that they have planned for the future. There is you know, we don't have the, in Conservation Commission, we don't have the benefit of Bob Kennedy's presence. And he has been so central to the Goody's Beach pollution mitigation remediation pollution mitigation remediation issues that I, we'll, we'll see how the, we need to make sure, make sure that his input makes it into the final report, and that I have adequately communicated, I have accurately communicated to him my assessment that the, the money for a, the reasons that the money for a larger scale effort are, are not gonna be forthcoming this year.
Well, I think we, the recommendations that were made of the smaller steps that can be taken are indeed, I think, gonna be taken.
Yeah, it's, it's that...
No dogs on the beach.
No, it's not, it's not that, it's that, I, again, I don't like, you know, putting words into people's mouth when they're not here, but I don't think the entire Conservation Commission is of one mind with regard to the, those recommendations.
Got it.
And I will leave it at that, and hopefully, we'll find a way to communicate the subtext of what I'm saying in the final report so that everybody feels that their voices have been heard.
Okay. There you go. Both signed? Well, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Look at this, it's not even nine o'clock.